Good afternoon. We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on November 5th, 2019, to order at 3 o'clock PM. Welcome to our guests. All council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Meek. Please join us for a moment of silence. Thank you. We will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon to you. And council members will be, with your permission, be rearranging the agenda a little bit this afternoon. I would like for, Clint's got one public hearing item in the work session. I'll have him go first. And then I'd like to change Mallette's presentation on the TIF items to the first item. And then we'll do household hazardous waste after that. And then we're going to pull the W. Mars item because Lisa is in the, in the meeting with water systems today.
Okay.
And I don't know exactly what time she'll be here. So if y'all are okay with that, we're going to proceed that way.
Good.
Sounds good.
Under employee recognition, we have a massive agenda today. And I'd like to thank the city staff for bringing as many resolutions they did and all the, the work on the ordinances. This is a, a, a lot to bring forward in one agenda. Some very significant projects and, and support for those projects. So I'd like to acknowledge the great work of staff bringing this forward. Also, under employee recognition, and very importantly, Veterans' Day is next Monday, November 11th. Today, we would like to recognize our city staff who are military veterans. At your places, you have a list of 131
Wow.
Veteran city staff members. And I want to make a special thanks to Larry Day from our Fleet Services Department for organizing this for us. And there's Larry back there. And I was going to invite all 131 of them, but I figured the city operation would grind to a halt if I did. But we do have representatives of this group joining us from each department. When I call out your name, please stand and be recognized. The, the first is, I mentioned Larry Day, Chris Farmer from the Convention Center, Adam Wolf from IT, Matt Campbell from Parks and Recreation, Harold Daniels from General Services, Lacy Sanders from the Health District, Willie Berger from the Fire Department, see here, and Commander Vail George from the Police Department, and Nathan Palm from Solid Waste, Allison Duncan from Public Works Engineering. And we also have a few other veterans there that I wanted to, when we, when we give them an applause, I wanted to recognize all of them too. So they, any others that are in the audience, please stand. If you could all please stand.
If you could all please stand, if you were called earlier.
Yeah.
Okay. I want to say thank you all, thank you all for the service that you give to the city every day. And thank you all very much for the service you've given to our country. I really appreciate the fact that we're recognizing our employees who are veterans today. Thank you.
Also, under-
Get Monday off, though, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Like we need to add a holiday.
Just for the veterans.
Also, under employee recognition, I'd like to recognize Chris Avilia, the Waco MPO. Chris, would you please stand? The Waco MPO is proud to be the recipient of the 2019 National Award for Outstanding Overall Achievement for a Non-Transportation Management Area MPO by the Association of Metropolitan Planning Organizations. So I want to thank Chris for his great work there and acknowledge this award. Thank you, Chris. Also, under employee recognition, I'd like to introduce to y'all Tressa Gamblin. I think at the retreat, I said that I'd already introduced her to y'all, but here she is. I had not done that. Tressa is, is working in the city manager's office, and she's looking at a number of processes we have in the organization that, for operational purposes, need to be improved and streamlined. And she has a lot of expertise in that area. She was previously the Senior VP in Technology and Operations with Bank of America, and she served there for 25 years. She's worked in a variety of areas, including process management, project management, technology risk, and facility management. We're really excited to have Tressa here, and she's already had a, a big impact on the organization. We're looking for great things from her. So, thank you, Tressa. In formal reports, there are four today. The first is, have y'all seen this one before? Temporary change in water disinfectant to facilitate water system maintenance. This is a system burn, and it's important for us to do this regularly. And we'll be communicating with the citizens to try to make sure there are as many, as few surprises as possible. And then we have a status update.
Back on that one, while, there, this happens every couple of years, right?
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's nothing new where you're going to all of a sudden have a chlorine and all that. It's just-
Right.
It's a regular maintenance deal that has probably happened several times over the last few years.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's right.
And I do appreciate staff's efforts in being proactive and making sure that our constituents and people in our community know about this. So I really applaud your efforts of being just going forward and making sure that, as you said, while there are no surprise, there are, try to eliminate as many surprises as possible.
Right. Okay. Thank you. And then there's a status update on the Bus Rapid Transit, Rapid Transit Corridor. And I think Serena's here, if y'all have any questions on that. Okay. City of Waco Vegetation Maintenance, we're, we're doing a burn in the water system. We're going to do a burn at the wetlands, too. But our team out there is working closely with the Fire Department and all our partners out there to do this. This is an important, good, good article in the paper about the wetlands this weekend. And one of these days, I'd like to have the coordinator out there come and talk to the council about the good work that we do and how that really impacts our water quality. And then, at the October 15th council meeting, this is informal report 2019-823. There was a follow-up, a follow-up question on the Cockville Railroad Bridge, and that informal report responds to that. And Councilmember Holmes, you'll see there's a Gantt chart in there for you.
Highlighted in my book.
Pertaining to this informal report, I do, once again, appreciate the timeline that was provided to us. I know a few council members asked for the, asked for that last work session. And so I do appreciate you getting that to us. And it helps us put into timeframe what that project looks like and how long it'll take. But also, once again, just to reiterate that council will be here, whatever we can do to help in this project and make sure that it, it moves forward all the way to fruition. And so I thank you once again to everyone who's had a major part in putting this together.
Yeah, I'll just echo Councilman Sabido also that this is such an important project, I think, for the city and the connective nature of it, and the Baylor, and the, and the river, and just connecting downtown. I think it's a really cool project. And the Gantt chart is showing that, you know, we're going to have this thing done in a few years. So I'm excited that I'm part of councils, this thing comes to fruition.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And I wanted to, I'm glad you brought that up because it reminds me that this, Esmeralda, our city secretary, keeps notes on the request the council has during the meeting. Instead of bringing those back in some kind of must-do report, we're going to try to bring those back in an informal, at the very next meeting. It may be two meetings sometime because of the complexity, but we're going to try to do those that way and keep those from stacking up on us.
Love it.
But appreciate the city secretary's helping that and, and our, and our staff's coordination. And again, Ashley is critical in, in getting that put together. And she put that informal report together on the bridge.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to invite Larry Hosey to do the Hosey Report.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Stim. If you turn your attention to the screen, you'll see some great pictures made by Mark Randolph. An estimated 40,000 visitors converged on Waco during the weekend of October the 17th through the 19th for celebration. The Waco Convention Center staff were kept busy trying to find accommodations at all of the already booked hotels. The street and traffic departments, along with police, rerouted traffic to accommodate the more than 50 vendor booths, and efficiently helped handle all the thousands of visitors who enjoyed a beautiful weekend in Waco. On October the 14th, crews with Grant Demolition began tearing down the historic 25th Street Theater to make room for the construction of the new location of the fire station number six and fire administration offices. In conjunction with National Fossil Day, the Waco Man of National Monument hosted its annual Fall Fossil Festival on Saturday, October the 19th. It featured painting pumpkins, face painting, arts and crafts, and meeting camels. And kids were even able to dig in the fossils dig. The 19th Annual Genealogy Lock-in was held on the West Waco Library on Friday, October the 18th. It was a great opportunity for beginners and experts to pursue their family history and learn more about genealogy in general. A series of eight programs were presented in-house and remotely. The Ironman 70.3 Triathlon attracted 3,200 participants and their support teams, friends and families, to Waco the weekend of October the 25th to the 27th. Mayor Dever was at the finish line when Sam Appleton from Australia crossed the finish line at the Suspension Bridge in 3 hours, 47 minutes, and 15 seconds. The race included swimming 1.2 miles, biking 56 miles through the northern parts of the city, and finishing with a 13.1 mile run. Thanks to the Parks and Recreation Department, our streets, traffic, and police departments, the Ironman competition enjoyed their second competition in Waco. On Friday, October the 25th, the Waco Fire Department and the City of Waco welcomed special guest Senator John Cornyn as he participated in the dedication and official hose uncoupling of the new fire station number five at 4515 Bagby Avenue. The new station is expected to be one of the busiest in the department, and it is also the new home for Battalion Chief Two. Earlier that week, the city received word that we would be receiving the highest ISO number one reading, which is a result of the combination of outstanding water system and our fire department. Both departments have worked hard to earn this prestigious status that could result in savings to Waco's citizens on their homeowner's insurance. The Waco Fire Department facilitated a mock disaster at the MCC Training Center for a group of junior college students from around the state who were attending the Journalism Workshop at Baylor University on Friday, October the 18th. The workshop, led by Bruce Geeson, Director of Student Media at Baylor University, challenged the students to take photographs and video of the event, write a story, and have it ready for the deadline in one hour. The Friends of the Library held its annual book sale Friday through Sundays, November the 1st through the 3rd. This year, the sale was held in the Waco Convention Center, and funds raised go toward special projects and summer programs at the library. 124 Friends volunteers worked over 500 hours sorting, displaying, and selling the 53,000 books to an estimated 8,400 visitors. Waco-area kids had several choices to enjoy a safe, fun Halloween this year with carnivals at South Waco Library on October the 29th, and Bloodsill Miller Community Center, and the Zoo Boo at the zoo on October the 31st. The Waco-McClendon County Public Health District and MCC partnered on a full-scale point-of-dispensing exercise on October the 31st, where volunteers went through the actual stages of a mass medication deployment exercise. At the end of the fiscal year, the work at the Humane Society of Central Texas and the City of Waco Animal Services ended with a live exit rate of 92.5% from our animal, for our animal shelter, a huge accomplishment compared to the rate of less than 40% only six years ago. Coming up, the Waco, the City of Waco Solid Waste Services will be holding a Free Scrap Tire Day, disposal day, on November the 9th to address illegal dumping. Waco residents can take up to 10 tire, passenger tires off the rim to 501 Schroeder to properly dispose of them at no cost. Again, this year, the Veterans' Day, on Veterans' Day, the Waco City Cable Channel will broadcast live the big Veterans' Day parade through downtown Waco on our cable channel and livestream, where last year, we had over 1,500 viewers watch from all over the world, including five foreign countries. The parade will start at 11:00 AM, and over 180 units are expected. On November the 9th, Councilmember Andrea Bearfield will be holding a District One Community Meeting on the 1 at the James Conley Aerospace Center on the TSTC campus starting at 10:00 AM. And Councilmember Hector Sabido will hold a District Two conversation on November 12th at the Syntex Hispanic Chamber of Commerce at 6:00 PM. That completes my report.
It's a great report, Larry. There's amazing amount of stuff that's been going on in Waco over the last few weeks. And I want to compliment all the volunteers and everyone that worked so hard on the Ironman. That was just a fantastic event. And I know I had my picture on there. We should have had a picture of Councilmember Canard getting hit by the champagne court.
Celebratory champagne court.
The winner hit John Canard right between the eyes with the champagne court.
I mean, you were looking kind of fit there. I was going to tell Jonathan, make sure that they sign you up next year.
Yeah. I don't think so. Anyway, thank you, Larry. It's a great report.
Thank you, Larry. Mayor and Council, under public hearings today, there are two items. And I'd like to go ahead and call on Clint for public hearing 2019-828, for him to review that item.
Clint Peters, Planning Services. This is the first plat that y'all have seen since the new ordinance that we adopted to address the new requirements from House Bill 36, 3167 on the approval process. This is a final plat for Phase Five of the Creekside Edition. This is a 33-lot, single-family residential subdivision in the Ritchie Road corridor off of Warren Road. Plan Commission did recommend approval of the plat. And it does come to you with a new resolution at your place, corrected resolution with that approval. And there is a statement on the, on the plat that the infrastructure must be completed and approved by the City of Waco or a performance guarantee submitted and approved before the plat can be recorded.
Appreciate it. And Clint, yeah, if we could, I know we're working through the process of this new, with these new requirements. If we could just, it helps to have that, the map that was on the slide prior that just shows where these plats are in space.
Context.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think that'd be, that's helpful. Other than that, I, thanks.
Yeah, we'll get that.
So, I mean, the approval is not disapproved until, we got to, we got to word these different-
Yeah, so it, so it's just for approval. So the, the new state law requires cities to either approve, approve a condition, or disapprove. So this one was for approval. There, in the background information, it does say with a condition, but that, that condition really is just they have to finish putting in the infrastructure. So it's really not a condition of the plat or the construction plans. It's just that the plat can't be recorded until the infrastructure that has been approved with this agenda item is installed.
Okay. Thanks, Clint.
Thank you, Clint. And Mallette will cover the public hearing on the economic development items and TIF items in the work session. Under resolutions, there's 39 today. I'm going to run through just a few of those. Like I mentioned earlier, there's a, there's some significant items on this agenda, so I wanted to touch on as many of those as I can here. 2019-830 is notice of intent on our 2020 bonds with a maximum principal aggregate amount not to exceed $65 million. And this will continue the council's initiatives on infrastructure. Resolution 2019-831, this would authorize us to do a, do a request for proposals for the selection of a consultant to develop a strategic economic development plan. I'd like to invite Assistant City Manager Bradley forward to comment on this item.
Thanks, Wiley. Mayor and Council, as Wiley mentioned, this resolution would allow us to open up an RFP process for an economic development strategic plan. And really, what this RFP process will, will seek to do is build from the success of our prior efforts in economic development and really create a, an actionable plan to guide our economic development efforts over the next 10 years. The resulting plan would align our economic development strategies amongst our various economic development partners, which I think is an important goal. And additionally, it'll establish new economic development priorities, which we haven't done in quite some time. It'll also align our incentive policies to those new priorities. So similar work has taken place in Fort Worth and Austin recently, and it's shown to be very fruitful. And staff anticipates, after we do an RFP process, we would select a consultant or a team of consultants potentially by early 2020 and get started on that work.
It's really exciting, the way we're doing this.
Well, I, I think it's important. I mean, I also think that in terms of the deliverables, I mean, some of the things, we already pay the chamber 170,000 a year to, you know, analyze our economy and do some of this. I just, I'm concerned with the timeline for this, how long it's going to take, the fact that I think we have some practical steps and solutions we could take in the interim to address some of the concerns that myself and other council members have raised about our economic development policies and incentives and kind of the way we go about it. I know, I, I think this is important, and I, I'm glad we're doing it, though you know my feeling about us consultants and the reports and making sure that we actually follow through with all the recommendations they, they come up with. I just, I'm concerned, I'm, as to the, the timeline for this and how long it'll take before we even get to a place where we have something actionable. I, I think there's some recommendations we've made already, or some things that we'd like to see, that I would like to go ahead and see happen prior to, just, just some steps forward while we go through this process as well. I mean, and I think we can probably discuss that subsequently. But I, again, I agree that we need to go through this process, but I just think there are some things we, I think we've identified or at least suggested or have, if, one is priorities, I think we could go ahead and move on before we go through this.
I'll just add a little bit. I mean, I'm in favor of getting this going, but when we say develop a strategic economic development plan, it's pretty broad. We got to make sure we're presenting that consultant in the, in the bid with some kind of scope of what we're talking about. And, and make sure that we can, as our sealed, because all we're doing here is approving the process of the sealed bid procedure, which is good. And, and in general, I like the idea of getting the eco dev thing going, but let's make sure we're defining that scope properly. I guess I'd like to see that as we put that out.
I think one of the things that is just germane to the nature of this council and the work that we've been doing recently is that I don't know that any economic development strategic plan has ever had an equity lens in it, and not what we have asked the change to do, not anything that has come before. And I know that, that being a priority, we have to look at that from that perspective, dealing with our economic development growth in our communities, and making sure that all of our communities are represented in that language and in that scope. So I know that one of the things that will be included or should be included in our request for proposal is that, just that. So I'm, I'm almost positive that that's one of the lenses that we will be looking for and requiring of the next person who is going to, whomever should be selected to do this, this proposal.
Thank you. Resolution 2019-832 says a contract amendment with Pacheco Coke for civil engineering design services, off-site public improvements for the riverfront development. We're increasing that by $62,000 for additional work that we're requiring them to do. And I wanted to, I talked a little bit about staff work on many of these items at the beginning, but this is one of those issues that it's absolutely critical for our staff to stay engaged on this very important project as we address some of the challenges that we face in, on that particular piece of property to get it developed. And so I want to thank them for staying involved and staying diligent on this. And this, some of the drainage work that's, that's in this proposal here is absolutely critical to the project. And it's some, and some federal permitting has been required. And so we're working through all that. But, so, very worthwhile project, and we're going to keep pushing to bring it forward.
I have, I've had some businesses and organizations around that area reach out to me as we are working on this infrastructure in the area to make sure that, number one, they are being informed of what's going on. And number two, just trying to take every precautionary matter that we can take to make sure that their business is not interrupted on a daily basis, especially those that are utilizing water and sewer consistently throughout the day. And so I appreciate staff's efforts, but as we, as we move forward with this project, if we can just think about that and just communicating that to the businesses around that area as well, as, as we begin to work, to work on this project.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We'll do that. Resolutions 2019-833 through 835, these have to do with our housing and homeless initiatives, including accepting a continuum of care renewal grant for $62,000 and approving a one-year extension of the CDBG agreement with Grassroots Community Development for Roof Repair Program, and then accepting a continuum of care planning grant for $49,000. And Galen Price, our Director of Housing, is here if you have any questions on these items.
Just a couple of quick ones. And actually, on the HMIS system for 833 and 835, this might be an informal report as a follow-up item, but just what exactly we do with the information in the database, how we, what actionable steps have been taken, how we, you know, as part of that collective impact work that we want to do, just, just what we actually, what, what information we're gathering, what we do with it, and what we've, what we've identified as things we could move the levers on to kind of address that problem more. And then, real, real quick on 834, I just want to know if there's anything with grassroots, is there anything we can do, because we're extending them because they were having trouble attracting qualified applicants. I just want to make sure, anything we can do to help them get the word out and find whatever qualifies applicants, to find those qualified applicants, to make sure they can take advantage of this program, I think we should do.
We can get you an informal report on that.
I was at a Neighborhood Association meeting last night, and a representative from Grassroots was there talking about this project specifically. And there was an interest from the people that were attending the Neighborhood Association. So I think that is a very powerful tool, that if we can utilize that, I think that'll be beneficial for the city and for grassroots down the, in finding those qualified applicants.
Well, we know they're there.
Exactly. You're exactly right.
Yeah.
And I mean, to the point that it's, it's, was a million-dollar project, right? And 46,000 left. I mean, that's not bad. That's not, I mean, we've, we've done quite a bit. And, you know, let's just go ahead and get this last-
Been strong.
Well, I, I think it was 180,000.
180,000, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Which is still, was still a substantial amount. So, and it's, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Our resolutions, 840 through 842, all contribute to the development of a Texas anti-gang center. This was funded by a recent grant awarded from the governor's office. Chief Holt is available here if you have any questions on any of those items.
No questions. And I know I'm talking a lot, but, oh, well. No questions, but I just want to say how grateful I am for this project. I think this is, you know, once again, another council's priority is its public safety, and that this is coming before council. And implementing this for, for our city and for our community, I think, is great. I think it's very forward-thinking. And I really want to thank the City of Waco and our Waco PD and every partner that has been involved in this process for just making this happen. I'm very excited that we're bringing this to our community.
Thank you, Councilmember. Resolution 2019-847, this is a, a contract with Converge One to upgrade the city's avaya phone system. This work will virtualize 14 servers down to three, and, but at the same time, maintain the redundancy that we have in the phone system to not only support regular city operations, but, but also to support public safety. And it's good, good, under-budget development here on this project. And I, I was part of the team that bought this phone system. And to me, the one we have is still new, but it's eight years old. I found out. Time flies. It's eight years old, yeah. But, but I think this is, this allows us to have continued support, both on the software and the hardware side. So it's, it's a, it's, this is a good project. Resolution 2019-848, terminates the existing interlocal agreement with TSTC and approves a new one for reimbursement to the city for fixed route bus service for TSTC students at no cost to the student. The contract would begin tomorrow, November 6th, and end August 31st, 2021. Total contract amount of $29,000. And I want to thank TSTC, I see Adam Hutchinson sitting out there, for being a great partner and working with us on this.
I just wanted to give a special thank you to the Waco Transit staff and the city management staff for getting this done. We know how important it is to make sure that we can move around our, our students as, with, as seamlessly as possible. And especially, you know, we have amazing partners in, in TSTC, so I'm glad to see this done. But I appreciate the efforts and the work that Waco Transit has done, city management office, and to keep, you know, keep our, our students moving and our partnership strong.
Thank you, Councilmember. Resolution 2019-850 and 851, both have to do with the 2020 Household Hazardous Waste Day. And Anna will be here to make a presentation on that during work session. Resolution 2019-856, this is an assignment of the Elm Avenue Infrastructure Improvement Project contract to MRB Group from BSP Engineers. This is a purchase, an asset purchase agreement between MRB and BSP. But the BSP team will continue to be assigned to this project and work now as part of the MRB group. The resolution also authorizes, authorizes an amendment to the contract to include construction management inspection services in an amount not to exceed $199,000.
Do we know that we're going to incur those construction management costs when we execute, execute the original contract? I mean, I'd just like to, if, if we know that's going to come in, just having that estimate kind of upfront, so we know what the total cost of the project is, I think it'd be helpful.
Well, it's not unusual for us to come back and add those, because when you go through design, you kind of get a feel for what you're going to have, and whether or not our, our staff, our inspection staff can handle it, or whether we want to get the, the engineering firm, the consultants, to do it. to do it.
And we don't know that until the design comes through. I mean, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's, we could potentially do it that way on some of them maybe, but it's better actually for us to get the design done first and then as we bid, or get close to bidding the project, add the construction services.
Okay.
Resolution.
About, I just, I want to comment quickly on 853, 854, 856, I'll put together a few, that's the design of these pavement projects we have, which I think is just, I love seeing this stuff come in because this is the front end of the Dutton Avenue project and the Fourth Street project and the Elm Avenue project. And if you add all those up, it's right at 30 million of actual road improvements and the infrastructure improvement we're doing for the city here, or the cities, taxpayers are doing for themselves, really. I'm just, I'm glad we're getting this stuff launched, I just love looking at, seeing this stuff get traction.
Yeah, and I appreciate you bringing that up because I intended to mention the Dutton project. Obviously, it's a very important project for, for that is an arterial in that part of town and it's a little bit of a roller coaster right now. And so we're anxious to get that done. That is, I think Jim Reed tells me it's about a six and a half million dollar project with water, sewer and streets improvements in it. And then we hopefully in the next year or two, we'll bring you phase two of that to take it all the way to Valley Mills Drive. So that's an important, I thank you, council member Holmes, for bringing that up.
Well, Sophie, I want to thank you also for, for working on Dutton from 11th Street to 26th Street. I have heard the concerns of the constituents and the people that drive in that area and describing it as a roller coaster is very gracious, I think. But, but I, I hope that they see that their concerns have been heard and, and that the project is being worked on and I think they'll be very happy, will be very happy with the outcome once the project has been completed, so thank you for that.
Well, and I'll just add on that on 852, the emergency repairs to Lake Aaron Sanger intersection, I mean, I watched that deteriorate very quickly because I drive it every day. And so the responsiveness of staff and crews to get out there and, because that's, jackhammering up concrete and fixing that is not an easy solution. And so our, our work to get that done quickly to promote, you know, our driver safety and get that cleaned up was very good. So I just want to say thanks for that.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm real proud of Amy Berlali-Hyland and her, her team in engineering for getting that done as expeditiously as they did. It was a little bit expensive, but it's a, it's a very critical intersection and it was, it was not a good condition, so we needed to get it fixed.
Absolutely.
Let me get back in here. And then, let's see, the, there's 2019-857 is a, the first of some of our upsizing of the sewer system in the China Spring area, Brentwood and Cougar Ridge, and it's a $1.7 million project. Resolution 2019-862, this is a water line easement with Leroy Tours Gerald Water Supply Corporation. And I mention this because I think you may be seeing a few of these water supply corporations around Waco coming to us for two reasons. One is the aquifer is, can't support the type of development that we're seeing long-term in McClintock County. And secondly, there is an arsenic issue that there's EPA order on that they need to do some blending with and, and so we're working with this water system, kind of the first of probably several that we're gonna see on this. Resolution 2019-864 and 865, having to do with the repairs of Land and Branch Bridge. 864 rejects the bid that we received, which was about two and a half times more than we thought it was gonna be, to do the bridge and the water line. And then 865 ratifies an emergency repair. I think we got a picture of that expansion joint. Larry, do you have that, that there?
Yeah.
Expansion joint that was repaired under, for $169,000. That's a 48-inch water line and not the most ideal place under the bridge to work. But we have to do this work during the winter time when we can reroute water through a smaller line when we're, when our demand is not there. So we're gonna come back with another bid package next year to try to give the contractors a little bit more time to get this work done. And then 866 is a new cost of service study in water and wastewater with new gen strategies. 2019-867 is a cost share agreement with Cooper's Real Estate Investment Corporation for wastewater system improvements in Highway 84 corridor at the Valverde Road area. And this is a development that Ken Cooper's putting in there as agreement that Clint, Clint Peters, Lisa Tyre, and I believe John Patterson, our legal department, worked out to, to allow for that sewer extension. It was a good discussion we had with the developer and it allows that project to move forward as we move forward with sewer capacity out there. And there are six ordinances today, all are second reading with the exception of the first one, and that has to do with the board composition, Animal Welfare Board.
All right. Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Now, the consent agenda will include resolutions 2019-830 through 2019-868 unless a visitor card is received on any consent agenda item. And I'll turn it back to Wiley to introduce the next work session presentation.
Question, or one comment on the ordinances, that was the second reading, but I want to bring it up again, on the, the fact that we're hiring more police officers in that department. I think it's great, I think, at least in my district, I think we're hearing the call of the citizens that we want more policemen and it's been a long time since we have hired police and I'm happy to be part of the group here that has increased the force. And I appreciate Chief Holt, where, Chief, where are you? There you go, okay. Chief, thank you for everything you're doing. This deal and the, and the gang deal, I mean, it's, it's a lot to load on you and I appreciate everything you're doing to lead that very important part of the safety here in Waco. Thanks.
Big agenda.
Yeah.
Thank you, council member. Our first presentation is a discussion of economic development, public hearing items, and this is Mellette Harrison, our executive director of economic development. Mellette?
Thank you, Wiley. Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm here today to talk about the TIF items that you have on your agenda for consider under the public hearing section of the agenda today. And this is, I believe, a record for us and items of consideration to bring at one city council meeting or at one TIF meeting. So there are eight, six of those are projects and then a couple of, five of those are projects, a couple of amendment requests, so it's not quite as daunting as it seems. But we've got project on Elm, the big project on Bridge Street, Quiet Zone, Webster Avenue sidewalks, contract extension for the container, a contract amendment for the Barron's Building, Barron's Loss Number Two, which is the Fable Bookstore project, then Taylor Street slide removal, and then a slot improvement grant program is in need of some additional funding. So we'll start with 305 Elm Avenue. So this is a rendering of an anticipated look, a renovation of an existing building on Elm that many of you will recognize when you show, we'll show you the existing photos, but it's located 305 Elm, which right now is sort of adjacent to Mann Street where it cuts through, sort of, over aerial view of the sort of site plan. This existing building shown here in green with a small addition to it. There are no other buildings on that block at this time. There are some slabs on the corner of Myrtle and Elm where buildings were previously but came down. So it's, it would be standalone. It's a new development group for us, we have not worked yet with them before. So we put their group in here for your, just for your knowledge, Cody Carlson, Jay Kelly, John Fagan and John Niklos are a group that has done some things together in other locations and we're happy to have them looking at doing things here in Waco now. We don't always have tenants, we don't always know what the tenants are going to be with some of our TIF. This actually does, two very specific tenants, they're working to get this project done so they can house in this location. The first one is Third Space Coffee Theory, or Theory Coffee, which is owned by Andreas and Bianca, and I'm gonna butcher it, Salumis, I believe is correct. They currently have a coffee cart at 712, Cultivate 712, and they're also at Farmers Market sometimes, so you would recognize them. And they're gonna move into a bricks and mortar space here. And then City Ranch Boot Company, which does some really cool custom-designed boots. And they're gonna have, occupy sort of the back space of this building. So current photos, you'll see the building is in a state of disrepair. The bottom, middle and right photo show you that it is, those are not skylights, that is in need of roof on top of it. But I'll draw your attention to the top middle photo, that is the back end of the building and it is believed to be maybe the oldest existing building in East Waco, that portion, that small brick portion there. So they have, they're taking great steps to make sure they can restore that and maintain it. So you'll notice the brick portion here, that's that lower elevation height and then an addition on top of that that gets you to a ceiling height of, of what they would need inside the shop, but they're, they're really going out of their way to try to maintain that specific brick portion, which we are very appreciative of. And then this is a view of the front space that would be on Elm where the coffee would be. So that's just a kind of a corner look of the building itself. And I say corner because this area is in a little bit of flux with the front porch project and they're reconfiguring some things, so this is sort of what we think it will look like right now regarding street or sidewalk, but that could change with the front porch project. So just a quick overview of the site plans, I show this because you will notice at the back here, this part does not exist. So that would be an addition for the boot shop needs. The rest of the building is existing and they look at, are looking at doing maybe a little bit of green space on this side and certainly the both entries on the, on the side where Mann Street is now. So public improvements that are involved are really all about sidewalks, streetscape and working with our other large projects in the area to make sure they're getting stuff where it needs to be. They have chosen to do the sidewalk that is at least immediately adjacent to their project site, not for the whole block, but to make sure that they will have some access as the other Elm Streets, Elm Avenue Streetscape project and then the Bridge Street project move forward and theirs, they will at least have sidewalk installed that allows them access. Current value of that building is, according to MACAD, is 17,500. They're estimating an additional private cost of total budget of about 982,000. Part of that is public improvements that they're asking for TIF assistance for and then 770,000 on their side. So they've asked for 208,000. And we are recommending, from TIF standpoints and the TIF board is recommending a 200,000, which is about 20%, a little over 20% of the total project costs. You know, we try to stay around the 15% mark, but we have routinely gone around the 20% mark for projects along Elm because the value is a little bit out of kilter with what it would be and will be soon, probably. So that $200,000 would get recommended to be paid in two parts, 100,000 upon completion and then the second payment a year after that and appraisal dispute amount being the 995-517, which is their MACAD value plus the total private costs. Excuse me. This is kind of standard stuff recommendation stuff for us, but that third bullet there is they must work with our public works department to make sure that the sidewalk construction and design that they are doing there is going to match up and be cohesive and connected to the Elm Street stuff and the Bridge Street stuff and the Plaza stuff. And we do have some overlapping design professionals there and also general contractor folks, so we believe they're off to a good start with having some of the same folks involved. But that's, that's sort of the most critical part of this is to make sure it all works together once it's constructed.
Well, before you move on to bridge, is the part that would be included in the Elm Avenue Streetscape not backed out of their TIF, is it backed out of their TIF ASK?
No, it is included in their TIF ASK, the sidewalk piece that is immediately adjacent.
On the, go back.
Let me get back to this. Oops, there it is. So sidewalk that they would construct here along Elm and then here along the side of their building, which has an additional front door for the boot space, they will construct this. So we've included funding in this project for that. Now, I may not have understood your question by seeing your expression.
It's not included, well, so what I'm asking is this part that, especially the Elm Avenue side, is not already included in what we're doing in the Streetscape?
It would be included in what we're doing in the Streetscape, but what they have chosen to do is go ahead and build their piece.
I see, I see.
So they're not denied access when that other construction is going on. So we're, the design, we are leaning towards the Elm Streetscape design process, but we, they just want to be able to construct their little corner of the world so they can continue to be.
Move on, okay, very good. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so the Bridge Street Front Porch Project, this is a very ambitious and very cool project that we're excited to bring to you. It really runs from the suspension bridge itself in a, in a walkway of some sorts across Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, goes up Bridge Street to a large space of property where there will be a public plaza. That's just an aerial view of a little bit of what that shows you as well. City Center Waco is sort of leading this project for us from a standpoint of they are working with our public works department to make sure all those things connect and coordinate that they are who the grant would actually go to if it is awarded. This is an overall concept drawing on the right-hand side there that they worked, City Center Waco worked with a bunch of community group input and architect RBDR to come to sort of what do we want this to look like, what do we want it to be and feel like. Now we are moving to the point of getting funding for the actual design, build and construction process. So this process sort of created the feel and what it should be. Now we're talking about how do we go about constructing or demoing what needs to be demolished and then paying attention to the new construction of a festival street, making sure that the paving and is right, that the drainage is right, transitioning from some curb to an area where there's no curb and then lighting and other ADA improvements. So just a photo of where we are currently, you'll notice this is a couple of weeks old because there's a lot more construction activity going both at 100 Bridge down there and then the Cambrian Even Hotel sites, those are going very quickly and moving forward with their construction process. So we want this to be done in time for those completions as well. Excuse me, just some additional current photos of the construction that is actually going on along Bridge Street. You see Empire Seed there, the white building. And then there it is again, it shows a little bit further up. So this is really the first block, if you will, of Bridge Street, the second block, and then this Plaza space takes in this, this space up here, just beyond where Empire Seed and that attached building is. Lots to work with, lots to figure out in the process. And you'll notice quite a few overhead lines there that we're working through the process of finding a way to get those undergrounded or moved. Once again, the Plaza site is, has sort of a vision for what it will be, it's getting designed further of where it will actually land and also a realignment of Mann Street as it goes from Elm across this space and then hopefully eventually all the way over to Taylor. That would be a separate project, the Taylor piece. So timeline for this project, they are moving forward with a construction manager at risk approach, so they can move as quickly as they need to, to be in conjunction with the surrounding development. So they are already in the process of some of this, as you'll note, their design is already underway, they are working with all the related stakeholders. The plan interview and permitting process, they anticipate to start into pretty quickly, but that will be an ongoing piece probably from November through February. They already came to the TIF meeting, that is why we are here today presenting it to you. They anticipate construction starting in February and for the pavement, so the street portion will be wrapped up around June of next year, but there will be some landscape, architectural, other pieces, so the sidewalk space and probably some of the Plaza amenities that won't get done until a little bit after that, but they will get the street designed back open functionally and then put the rest of the amenities in as soon as they, as soon as they possibly can after that. So there's just one large budget item here that, for your consideration, 5,548 is the project estimate for the entire design-build process. That is obviously probably a rounded number because we're moving into this with some design-build options, but that will allow them to stay within this budget. I will just break it down for you a little bit because there's some obvious big pieces here. So they have about, in this number, about one and a half million for the demolition Uh, so they have about, in this number, about one and a half million for the demolition of the existing street sidewalk stuff. Um, and then rebuilding the sidewalks with lights, trees, curb, gutter and, and ADA accessibility. There's about one point eight million dedicated to electrical and drainage. And then about two million for just the reconstruction of the street and the parking, on-street parking and the places that it goes. Um, and then there's some other design money as well, but those are the big, the main large pieces in this. So, uh, staff recommendation is for funding the entire amount. Um, as I mentioned, this is City Center Waco. Um, so they in some ways end up being funded like some of our in-house projects. Um, so the amount would be paid in portions as the project is completed. So much like a public works project for the city would be funded, this would be funded in the same way. Um, and it's, it's the full five point five, five point five four eight million. Anything on?
So, no, my only question on this one is that, I mean, I know that like, like you've shown, there's significant construction already happening on both sides of Bridge, which is fantastic. I just want to make sure that whatever we've already done with that and what's approved in the work there, I mean, it's all gonna be congruent and all kind of consistent. I just want to, whatever we envision and intend for this street and whether we want to string lights along at some point or what, that there's some consistency and coherence in the development that's already going up and our kind of plan for this and the work that we're gonna be doing. Is that, and you said there were, like, that there's some commonality amongst the design folks, right? So there's some opportunity to make sure we're all talking together and that that's, any, any minor changes might need to be made as part of what they're doing could be, maybe? Or is that gonna be necessary or am I just kinda just talking my turn?
There, there are some commonalities. There is also some forced communication that's going on on a weekly basis to make sure everybody that's not common or crossover is still talking to each other, um, be that the franchise utilities that are overhead right now that are going somewhere else. Um, but there is the, an, an engineering firm that is dealing primarily with the Elm Street project that is the Streetscape project on Elm. Um, and that is the part that's also related to the tech stock grant or the TOSA grant. Um, and then there is a different engineering firm that is working on the design of Bridge now, but they are in communications with each other and we are also connecting, specifically connecting the engineering firm that is working on the residential project and the hotel has been in communications very recently with the, um, TOSA grant, the, um, the people who are working on Elm Streetscape project, those are in communication with each other as well. And we're making sure we're working out where things go, um, and all the pieces line up at the end. Um, and, and quite frankly, who does what first.
Yeah. And, and, and so the, the main, I mean, five and a half million, you said a lot of it's utility relocation, but it looks like we're getting some, uh, design elements for new crosswalks and I'm, I'm assuming the street itself will be of a specific material and, and a plaza will be, any, any lighting or anything else that kind of is gonna go along this, it's gonna be part of that or? It'd be helpful to see maybe a slightly more detailed bunch, just to understand what particular aesthetics are gonna be. I mean, the design's great, I mean, I, I'm glad I have this drawing, but just to get a better idea of what, again aesthetically, what, what all elements are gonna be part of this would be, would be helpful.
Yes, sir. And we will get you more and more detail as we get it. As I mentioned, it's a design build process, so some of that is getting figured out right now. Um, but we will, we will keep you apprised of that.
And I do like seeing the public art incorporated as well. I think that's important, so as part of this.
I'll just follow John's comments with, um, the fact that it is so exciting to see that the dirt turning down there and things, you can imagine it going vertical with these hotels and the residential, it's, it's cool to see all that happening. Um, thank you for, I didn't see the materials, but you, uh, you provided it verbally, kind of the general budget, and I'll echo John on that, on, five and a half million is material, pretty material mountain. Uh, but you kind of described the big points on the demo and the design and the street. The, uh, part that I wanted to see more of was, was, and, and maybe it's just the nature of the deal, is the Plaza. Cause I mean, the, the street, cool, I like that, we got two million there, but the Plaza, on page seventy-seven, it was a tiny little picture. Do we have some kind of general ideas of what that might look like, two or three different kind of ways of lighting and you know what, and what, kind of what John was talking about? Cause I think we, I'm all for this project, it's great, but I would like the, the, the folks, the citizens to have some general expectation of what this is gonna look like and have us follow through on what that expectation is. A lot of city centers maybe already done that, but, uh, it seems like that's the core of what we're funding here and there's very little information on it.
What we have is just those additional concept renderings that RBDR went through the, the public input process with the community and the stakeholders that, that City Center convened. We do not have further design pieces, but we will ask them to provide those as they become available and as they get, um, figured out, uh, because we know everybody's anxious to see and, and comment and, and get excited about those elements, but we, uh, we don't have them currently, that is getting done right now.
Just my last two points are just the consistency in the design, cause all these, like the bridge we talked about last week and, and the, the, the Elm Avenue improvements that we're doing, the, the, the Bridge Street, the, the boot and coffee deal, it all kind of starts fitting together and just it's so exciting to see that happening here. And I love the, the quick timeline that we've got on it, but the consistency of design I think is, is important, is tantamount, as, as John and you've already said. So I'm, I'm, I'm real excited about the timeline too. A year from now it'll all be.
I agree with that, yeah, yeah, I think that's great.
Good Gant, Gant, I'm using that as a Gant shark.
Here we go. I did, I wanted to, to take a moment to recognize and, and thank the people of the community for meeting weekly to discuss the work groups that convene at City Center to discuss and, and create this, or, or create and cast vision to what this front porch neighborhood looks like, because that was their volunteer time. And the ti, you know, the vision that, that we have wished for and longed for and that, you know, with the help of city staff and the staff at City Center to make this actually come to fruition is, is awesome to see. I remember the beginning of this conversation, um, and now to see it at this, at this point, I'm really excited, I'm excited about the timeline too, cause you know, yesterday is, is exactly on time. Um, but one of the things that I do want to make mention is that all of the things that, that will happen on Elm, on Bridge, at the Cotton Belt Bridge, on Mary, on U Parks, they will all complement one another and that's my hope is that they complement one another without anybody losing their individuality. Because each neighborhood, each district that we have identified as downtown are incredibly different and unique in their own right. And so, you know, Elm Avenue District will have one feel and it's intentional. The riverfront will have one feel and it's intentional, complementary, but you know, there are some cities where everything looks the same and you have no idea where you are. And, and I'm like, I don't know that that's what we want to do, but making sure that everything looks like we did it on purpose and at the same time and together. And I think that, um, the, the nucleus of that is city staff, because you are working with everybody. And so, you know, you do have this, wait a minute, this, this doesn't look like this fits in this puzzle and you know, we want to make sure that our square pegs don't go in wrong holes. But, um, we want to make sure that it's complementary of each of the district and, and just adds the flavor, I think, of what we are trying to, to build and create in our, our, our extended downtown. But, you know, the work is good and I'm, I'm grateful for it.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, we'll transition over to the quiet zone, um, which has been, uh, under discussion for quite a while because it first had to be done a study and then now we move on to the actual construction funding part. So just a location map that shows you sort of the railroad tracks as they go through, uh, downtown. Um, and it really starts, our parameters here start at Peach Street and come all the way through, um, on Jackson Avenue, uh, where the railroad track is located. And every one of those little stars that you see are intersections in the quiet zone. And just for fun, there's also little circles here that show every tract of undeveloped property. And it's, uh, probably not a coincidence that property has not developed right along that train track. Um, but we do believe that this project will help with that. Specifically, a quiet zone is what it says it is. It is to, it put in improvements that allow the train tracks to be safer, that allow the horns not to be blown in this section of train track. So, uh, between Peach and Thirteenth, they would not blow their horns. Now, that said, it's not a guarantee. Obviously, if somebody's on the track, something needs to be, if there's an emergency situation, horns will be blown. But for the most part, once this is constructed, it should function, um, and be in much quieter spaces in our downtown. So, um, improvements will need to be installed. Uh, that means gates where there are not, are not gates currently and lights, um, pretty much existed every crossing, uh, specifically concrete panels. So those crossings that are where the road is and then also where the sidewalks are, there's, it's safe and easy to walk across or roll across. Um, there are also channelization pieces, which means when there's a two-way street, you put something in the middle of the street that prevents people from being able to go around the gate. Um, the, the one-way streets will not need that, but the others that do not have it will. Um, obviously there's a lot, a lot of sidewalk connections that are fantastic that go across the railroad tracks, so those will be addressed as well, um, and some signing. And then council has already approved the conversion of Jackson Avenue from one-way to a one-way street. Um, and it actually runs from east to west or from river towards Thirteenth, um, if you're directionally impaired, like everybody in Waco. Um, so just a, a, a couple of pictures to show you what we're talking about. Um, here's a crossing on the left-hand side that's at Sixth Street that does have gate arms, um, with the lights, uh, but the sidewalk's not where it ought to be. Um, on Third Street, there are no gates at all, but there are flashing lights. A little bit bigger example of the sidewalk improvements that are needed, this is University Parks. So you see here this crosswalk design and there are concrete panels there for, when the railroad tracks, so it's easily transversible for someone walking or, uh, in a stroller or wheelchair or whatever the case may be. There are many other intersections that are like this. So the sidewalks do not connect across in a crosswalk fashion. There are no improvements other than for the street piece. So when pedestrians go through that intersection, they actually come out into the street, go across where they can walk or roll and then come back onto the sidewalk. So that's a big piece that needs to be worked on. Um, this is the channelization example. You could either do a median shown here on the left or these reflector pieces. Um, we have chosen the one on the right because of the cost advantage of going with that. Um, but not that alone, it's also that on the streets where we might put the median, uh, engineering has let me know that they would actually have to widen the road. So it wouldn't just be the cost of the median, it would also be the cost of widening the road and tearing out curb and gutter and redoing a wider piece there with right of way. Um, so for now, we are, are choosing this, this route.
Is there a third option for the channelization? And the reason I ask that is because, to be completely honest with you, I'm not a fan of these yellow bars sticking out of the street. Um, I think it could take away from the look and feel that we're trying to bring to downtown. Um, and so I'm, I'm not a fan of them and I understand that the first option is more costly. So I'm wondering if there's a third option that we could possibly explore, uh, that could be a happy median between being cost-effective, but yet still, uh, brings, ties to the look that we're going for in downtown Waco.
I think that's possible. Um, it, uh, it obviously is just a, a matter of cost and, and evaluating the options. Uh, I can ask engineering to look into that for us. I agree, this, the yellow is not the prettiest. Um, and so we were trying to do the most cost-effective work. That is also work that the city will do, not Union Pacific. Um, so I think we have some time to look at that and maybe bring you back a different option for your consideration.
I, I would definitely, uh, I would like to see some more options if, if available, just because, um, I know it's, it looks like something so minute, but I think it can make a big difference, esp- I, I especially could even see potentially people getting hurt by these things. Um, and so if there is a third option or fourth option we could explore, I would definitely like to see though, just because, uh, I, I, I'm not, I'm not ashamed to say I'm not a fan of these, the yellow poles sticking out of the, the, the street that way.
I appreciate that opinion.
Thank you.
It's not the first time I've heard that. I think, I think you've, I mean, you've heard that from several council members and.
Yes, sir.
Let's, let's look at other options and what the cost would be and maybe consider a revision there.
We sure will.
Thank you.
Um, and I'm happy to, to make that recommendation to them as well. So the schedule, uh, you'll see we are already underway. We have sent the notice intent to the Federal Rail Administration, um, and the users, which are Union Pacific and Burlington Northern and Santa Fe. We did the final engineering design. We have, uh, in November, we will enter into the railroad construction agreement with the railroad. That's why the funding needs to be allocated and in place. Um, the quiet zone construction itself will be a six to twelve month process. The kicker here is the railroad, Union Pacific does those improvements. So we, we are on their timeline. So when they start, we don't know, but we need to be ready for them to start and have the funding ready for them to do that. And then there is a city piece of that that would be, um, some of the sidewalk extensions, the channelization, whatever we choose to go with there, um, and some signage and pavement, uh, approach markings and that sort of thing. So, um, it's a six to twelve month process, but we don't know when Union Pacific will start exactly, so we're a little bit, that's why the, the little asterisk there is we're on their timeline. Um, but we do anticipate, all things considered, we're hopeful that it might be at the end of 2020, uh, when it's up and running and no longer blowing their horn.
But Molette, just to be clear, that final engineering design does not preclude us from doing something different with channelization and also maybe along Jackson Avenue?
I'm gonna have to check with them. I, I honestly don't know. I believe that is just the crossing pieces that are specific to the railroad, but I, I will have to check with engineering to make sure. So the total budget, um, is a million, five twenty-eight, eight oh seven. And that, as I've mentioned, does include city improvements at that one ninety-six, um, railroad improvements at one point one million and, and some contingency in there. Uh, so that's the total cost of the, uh, construction. Uh, we are recommending obviously the total amount, cause we want to see the project move forward and, and the quiet zone be implemented. Um, and that would be a total fund out of, out of the TIF grant. So they would also, since this is a public project, so to speak, it would be paid in, in phases as the portions of the project are completed and as that is drawn down.
Can you go back to that, uh, what was that total cost slide again?
A million, five twenty, or, this one?
Okay. I just want to make sure. Yeah. That one wasn't in the package. That was gonna be one of my questions of the total cost, so.
So they're estimating the total cost of construction of everything to be done, plus some contingency in there is one million, five twenty-eight. Um, that is not a lot for the city improvements that will get done, that's a hundred and ninety-six thousand. So that, that's the huge difference in channelization options, I suppose. Um, but the predominant, uh, funding there is about one point two million for the railroad improvements themselves.
And that one point two for, for the railroad gets them, they feel a hundred percent compliant from their liability perspective as far as having all the, the, the crossings in, in good enough shape where they can go to the zero sound or noiseless, whatever.
Yeah, well, it does all work together. So the channelization has to be there, the arms have to be there, the lights have to be there. All the pieces play a role in making sure that they, it is safe enough to not blow their horn.
Are they just gonna leave some the way they are or are they gonna upgrade every arm to look exactly the same coming from both ways or which, of the ten crossings, um, are, do all of them already have arms on them?
No, all of them do not have arms on them. I don't know that they will all look the same. Some, like the University Parks is already pretty well in compliance. It has everything done the way it should be done. Uh, the median, the, the crossbar, the bars that come down, the lights, the actual sidewalk improvements are there like they need to be, um, at least on one side. Uh, I think it's on both, but that is situated. Um, but the rest of them, all I believe, need some level of improvement, some pretty significant improvement, um, to the rail and the approaches.
Our, our investment companies have a, a short line railroad repair deal and we, it was about three or four hundred thousand a crossing. So it just seemed very cheap, or I mean, it seemed very, uh, when I was thinking that time stand, I thought a million one sounded on the very low end.
Well, we, we got lucky when we were doing the initial survey, study, I mean, sorry, the study with them, there were, there were, uh, mechanical pieces. Like I'm, I'm not the engineer and I don't work for the railroad, but there were pieces that were warning signals and electronic and mechanical pieces that existed that they didn't know were there. So some of the cost of how this system works, um, already existed and does not have to be installed. So I believe that's probably the cost savings there, that the differential in those, in that item, because I, I know our, uh, traffic engineer at the time was really happy to be, to find out that those pieces were in place, cause those were gonna be very expensive for each intersection if they had to be installed.
Yeah, it's not cheap. The other part that I was thought, I thought about too is from a pedestrian perspective, are they gonna be like cross, as, as we're encouraging, I guess, people to cross these, there's not gonna be any noise. as we're encouraging, I guess, people to cross these, there's not gonna be any noise to let them know that there's not gonna be a horn going. Are there they're gonna be, you know, go, stop, you have 30 seconds to get across, all that stuff. Whatever the state of the art is on that now, are those gonna be at every intersection as well for the pedestrians?
Well, there will still be gates for the vehicles, there will be lights flashing when the train is coming. There are some cases, I believe, there may be pedestrian gates as well or they may not be, that will depend on the design that's needed.
Okay. Thanks. Don't like this one too ambitious. November 2020 is gonna be a big month. The city will be completed.
So, okay, well, great. We'll move on to the Webster Avenue sidewalk improvements. This is just one block, but it is something that is really in desperate need of some improvements. And the Public Works Department is doing another very large project on Fifth Street, kind of the length of Fifth Street. I think almost from Waco Drive to I-35, they're doing a lot of things on Fifth Street. And they have we have provided some funding to be looped in with that much larger project for it to get done in conjunction with that piece. So this is, as you'll note here, piece of sidewalk that goes just on one side of the street and this is Fifth and this is Fourth. And that's Live Oak School, First Baptist Church here. And so heavily trafficked pedestrian traffic, stroller traffic, that sort of thing. The sidewalk needs to be ripped out and put a new sidewalk in, reinforced sidewalk, some storm drain improvements. Obviously, new curb and gutter, it's got a lot of broken spots and some new lighting. And most importantly, ADA accessibility needs to be improved. There are some ramps, but it needs to be better. So you look here at the corner of Fourth and it doesn't look terrible, doesn't look great, but it doesn't look terrible. But then you look a little bit further along Webster and you see, oh, my goodness. That is definitely in need of some love and some attention. Same thing, just more photos. But this is also one of the areas where we do have a mid-block crossing that school takes advantage of. And so just a lot of pedestrian traffic in this area that needs to be have a little bit better space to walk. So again, ramps at the corners, sidewalk and curb replaced or rebuilt here. And that's sort of the sum total of the project. As I mentioned, this is being lumped in with a very large other public works project. So all of this is the schedule for the actual big Fifth Street project itself. So that is one of the big differential down here and they plan to do contracts kind of at the end of this year, first part of next year, but the construction, although this would be like 120 days of just getting the sidewalk piece, it isn't a much larger project. So they anticipate this piece will get constructed in September of 2021 through probably January of 2022. Excuse me. So that would be there is a delay in the construction of it happening, but it is getting wrapped into this much larger project. The total cost for the rebuild of that sidewalk there on that block is 341,000. And we are recommending the total amount be funded.
Lesson from this one is that sidewalks are expensive. Anybody talks to us about it, sidewalks are expensive.
They take longer to get done too. How many? I'm sorry to interrupt you, John.
No, no, I thought that was my only point.
Did how many feet are that? I'm just trying to get a rough idea, what does it cost to, you know, completely redo per foot?
Well,
341,000, how many feet?
We have tried for a long time to put a standardized number to that, square feet, linear feet, something. And it always depends on what the drainage issues are. Those are big ones usually that that really mess with it. And we have not, we're still working on kind of the range of what is downtown sidewalk to rip it out and put it back in, curb, gutter, drainage, lights, trees, if you have them in a particular section. So we can try to work a little bit more on getting you that number, but every block is different. This one has a lot of drive approaches that need to be undone, maybe one that needs to be kept. So it's an interesting block.
But there this is are there there are lights on this one too or?
Yes, sir, there will be lights.
I think it'd be helpful to council, certainly me, just to know, like on this kind of project, because this I think is a little bit representative of a lot of our downtown sidewalks and the state of district area. For us to know that, you know, it's $5,000 a foot or whatever the number is, would help us figure out, you know, I want to get these three blocks fixed. That's gonna cost half a million bucks or whatever.
I can certainly get you what this one is per linear foot.
Cool.
I just didn't get the measure of the block. We can get you that.
And Mellette, I'm I'm assuming that we will be working with the school as well to let them know the process and just keeping them in the loop as the construction will be while the students are in school and in session. And so just opening up the lines of communication with Live Oak.
Yes, sir. And we we will be communicating with them. We have been communicating with them on and off for years because they wanted to to be able to do this themselves, but they didn't have they do all their building campaigns really on cash and they do not have the ability to front this.
Okay.
And so they're, I believe, just excited that this will happen, but we will coordinate with them because this, obviously, construction schedules change, so that one may change, but we will we will be in contact with them.
Just incidentally and I guess anecdotally, it'll I think it'll be nice for help our tourism a little bit too. Because I know it's like you occasionally drive through there and watch people visit the silos and kind of trudge across the railroad tracks and there's no good way to get across and they go down this sidewalk and they're, you know, it's not we're not being as inviting, I think, as we possibly can be. And I think it's important to get that, keep that that part of the silo area in good shape for our tourists.
Yes, sir. Okay, so the next project for your consideration is a contract extension for the container. Just a brief timeline on it. It originally came to the TIF board in 2017 and was recommended for funding. They it didn't come to the council till a few months later to get their LLC situated. Then in February of 2019, they requested an extension, which we have those contracts set up to allow just a six-month extension to be approved by the city manager so it doesn't have to come back to TIF board and council if they just need a little extra time. We have already exercised that option. In August, they notified us that they needed additional time, so that's why we have come back to TIF board and to the city council. They have listed some mixed reasons for their extension request, rain delay, construction delays, et cetera. We are recommending that we allow the additional 180 days and the new project deadline for completion would be March 2020. It is simply a contract amendment that has to be executed to allow that to go forward because there was a timeline, a deadline.
So so in essence, they're not asking for a change in funding, just the timeframe?
Just the amount of time to get it completed. And they have made some project scope changes in their process as they have gone along, added some some pieces. So it is understandable that their timeline has has extended as well.
So as they've on that prior slide, you know, the bottom line, anytime they blame us for the delay and for the request of the extension, I want to make sure that's valid. If they're making changes and then we just have to respond to those changes, but they don't communicate that in a timely manner. I just want to make I want to anytime they say that, I want to come to staff's defense and make sure that the that the delay in this was if now now if we really were slow, I mean, I want to know that as well. But if it's if it's not technically on us, I I don't like seeing that on this slide.
I I agree, this this is one of the reasons he gave and so that is why we included it, but I have already been looking into that.
Yeah.
I believe and that's why I mentioned the the change in project scope because that changed the I've already tracked down the permitting process and the changes that have, but I believe we were pretty responsive in that respect. I have not tracked down all the inspections.
Yeah.
So I I don't know that yet, but I I do believe right now there were delay definitely on both sides, maybe predominantly theirs, but we are still want to see the project completed, so.
As as do I, I just want to make sure that the responsibility is laid where responsibility is due.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
Are the changes major?
One of the changes was pretty major. They added the, well, let me just say, the first permit was issued in May of 2018. They sent in concept plans for the office space on the second level, which they got comments back. They sent those comments in on February of 2019, so there were several months in between where they were given the authority to to construct. And they sent in some changes in in February of 2019. They got comments back on that in March of 2019. And then there are still, there was an HVAC situation that they were all trying to figure out. And the response was just received here with our staff in August of 2019 on some pieces. So there has been back and forth on both peak both parts of that. But I don't, just from the information I've gotten so far, I think we have done our part in getting responses back. Okay, so Barron's Building, it's two. We've already had one Barron's project a long time ago, the Barron's Lofts. This is the small building next to it. They have requested an amount of funding from their original award of 556,267 to 445,000 more to 602,168. Do some additional public improvement costs. And I wanted to show you what we're talking about. It's this is the bookstore and so their project scope originally was just the building itself that you see here in older photo and they redid the bookstore and they were gonna have to redo sidewalk just in front. They have at our request, they did redid sidewalk from Mary Avenue here along Fourth all the way to Franklin Avenue. So they redid this whole block. And this is another one that had very weird project costs because of all these different driver approaches, because of all these parking lots. But the the piece here that look at is all these poles. And we're trying very hard to get rid of several of those poles or all of those poles at that intersection because it's
Clutter.
It's just a lot of clutter, visual clutter to to deal with. And so they they took on that project. I will say it was a different group when we were initially reviewing this project and taking it to TIF and to council than the person who owns it now, he bought it part of the way through the whole the whole piece. So I just wanted to point out this is what we're talking about because this is very hard to see. But there were notes on that intersection about existing poles need to be moved, coordinate with the utility company, the little walk, don't walk pedestrian sign needed to be relocated. There are comments on several of these plant set things that went back and forth between our planner of your group and them saying it needs to be relocated, that's that the contractor shall shall do that. And so our original recommendation to the TIF board was to deny the contract amendment request of 45,901. And we did that because we have a fairly longstanding protocol of people can come to TIF and ask for funding whenever they want, but if they don't have their budget figured out, that's really going to be to their advantage or disadvantage if they kind of have things figured out or not. So we have not, when people just run over budget because they didn't think about something, just automatically brought back and gotten them more TIF money. There's a cost to them as well because the longer they go and design, the more money it costs. So people rarely go through engineered designs, they just go through architectural designs to get their cost estimates. So there's always some give and take there. That said, if somebody runs into something completely unforeseen, they always have the opportunity to come back to TIF and ask for an amendment. And we have brought some of those to TIF and to you as well. If they want it, we will bring it forward. Since we posted our staff recommendation, we have gotten some additional information. And we did share some of that at the TIF board meeting. But essentially, this is odd for us and I feel a little odd saying it, but we would like to change our staff recommendation to you today. The TIF recommendation is board recommendation is still for denial, but our staff recommendation, we really do think it's probable that we should provide this additional 45,000. It's all about those public improvements and the poles. They got initially got quotes from the overhead utilities that said there would be no cost to do what they were going to do. And then at the end of the project, they got bills, not from Encore, but from some of the others. And it really is on our corner by our parking lot on the sidewalk piece that's public that we asked them to do. And we don't want to send a message going forward of a public piece that we've asked somebody else to step out and do, even though we're funding 100% of it. If there's a cost overrun that they they encounter on the totally public piece of that, we don't want them to have have to just eat $45,000. That's not fair. We appreciate them doing the project, so we are recommending staff that you consider providing a contract amendment to this project for that amount. But we are also upholding the TIF board's recommendation based on our original recommendation to follow our protocol that we deny the amendment request. So I'm sorry to bring you conflicting information, but I wanted to kind of lay it out for you as best I could.
I mean, is this a cost overrun or is this the contractors originally saying, I mean, was there an accepted bid where they provided that they would do this without the cost and now they're going back on that? I mean, who approved that? My question is, if it was represented originally, that wasn't gonna cost. And at what point, I mean, why isn't that legally binding? Like, how did this cost come come about if they said they were gonna do it without cost and that was the accepted bid?
Well, it wasn't a contractor so much, it was the franchise utility groups that said they there was no cost and then they they said there was a cost and I don't.
Well, but if they we have it in writing that there was no cost, isn't that enforceable?
I don't know.
Okay, I mean,
It wouldn't be between us or us involved in that, it would be between those parties.
Yeah, but but now we're being involved because we're asking we're being asked for an extra 45,000 for something that I I don't I mean, it's I understand that, I mean, and I I agree with you that we want to make sure that if it's something we've asked publicly, that we want to make sure that we make it happen. I just I'm a little confused on on the on why on how that was able to change and where the documentation for that came from.
My understanding was is that there was just an oral representation to the prior owner that there wouldn't be any cost.
Okay.
And there wasn't anything in writing that said that. And so when this new owner took over, you know, maybe somebody had changed at the utility, these were these were, as I understand it, two different cable companies, cable internet providers, cable internet telephone providers that ended up billing them for those those changes.
I will say the 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 quester, the person who owns the project now, will be here this evening for the public hearing. So he could answer some questions, he was not able to be here this afternoon.
Okay, well, the telecoms are so nice to us these days anyways. I can imagine them doing something like this, overcharging the public and private sector. It's unconscionable.
I see, I think I see what you're saying, Mellette, is this 45 is gonna go for a public sort of a thing anyway. If we ever wanted to get done outside of this, we'd be paying it maybe outside of general perhaps.
Well, and and, you know, the other reality is had they had this as a known cost in the beginning and that would have been part of their budget submission in their original TIF application, it would have been included.
Sure.
So that's why I really feel like had they not been told it would be no cost and then later, it would have been in their original budget, so we would have recommended funding for it then.
That makes sense.
I was gonna say, and I just think, you know, we take into consideration the change in ownership of the store as well. So I think there is some, I guess I would be more lenient because of that change in ownership and as as Councilman Holmes said, it's it's going to public use, so I definitely see that. My question, I do have a question for our city attorney, Jennifer. If if the TIF board voted against it, the staff is changing their recommendation, is there a super majority rule here?
No.
There isn't, okay.
But TIF is just an advisory board.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
And I think it's important for us to continue to maintain the the general policy that Mellette enunciated, which is we don't want you just coming back time after time for revisions. But this seems like a unique enough situation because it's public and because of some of the other factors. And it's I definitely think we want to be careful about not sending a message to developers that you're at risk when you take on these public aspects of the project that, you know, we're asking effectively asking them to do.
Yeah, and I agree with that wholeheartedly, I just this is a little different, but it's
Right.
Good question. A little clarity though, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So the next project for your consideration is Taylor Street slab removal and remediation. So there are probably known to all of you pretty well, there are some large concrete slabs that are on Taylor Street behind the East Waco Library, both sides of Taylor and then back around on Cherry. This has been identified as a place, well, here's a good aerial view of kind of what they are right now and just the general proposed not-so-fancy Photoshop of what they would be. So not-so-fancy Photoshop of what they would be. So there's a basic project cost here of 369,000 that City Center Waco, because they have purchased those properties, have asked us for, and that is including the whole remediation and, and removal of the slabs. So I just want to point out that there's, this is a piece of property that was identified as far back as the Upjohn study. You know, we have that, that phrase of people to jobs because we have transportation issues and people don't always live where all the jobs are. But this is an opportunity to bring jobs to people. This is a location where something that is job producing could be brought into an area. And so this is one of those that was identified in that Upjohn study. And so we just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. It is located near a lot of things. And we do believe that taking this step of just getting those, because the slabs are very, they're stair steps because there's slope to the lots, it's a lot of massive concrete there. And just to eliminate that barrier and that uncertainty of remediation issues that it could get out of the way in that parcel, get developed. So the request from City Center Waco is 369,430. And that is the bid from the remediation company. And we would pay that once the project is complete, upon completion. And we do expect them to get it done probably in the next 12 months. That is their timeline. So 100% of the, the costs.
I had a quick question on that, Mellett. Is that, are we taking into kind of any possible environmental contamination there?
We are, and they, it is an environmental company that has provided the assessment of this and the bid to do the work.
So that, after we get this done, it'll be, we'll get a clean ESA on it, and it'll be just green field or?
We will. But I will just add on the project that you've already approved, that the municipal settings designation would take it to the next level, and this property is included in that, that we are having done a municipal settings designation, which is a TCEQ, you know, designation for the entire TIF and some areas around the TIF, particularly in East Waco. So if there were any other issues beyond what this project would remediate, that, I believe that designation, once it's established, would eliminate any other concerns.
Good.
That's how it's been explained to me so far. So I hope that is, I'm explaining it correctly to you.
Yeah. It just wasn't clear in the materials there. And I'm all for getting it, getting the slabs out of there, but while we're moving things around, if there's some environmental issues, let's figure out what the cost of that might be.
Well, we haven't, they, they have engaged with a firm that should be able to have already identified that and then be able to address it if something arises.
That wasn't clear in the materials.
Part of the cost as well.
Yes, sir.
Or the ask, I should say. Perfect.
Okay. So facade improvement program. This program has been going on for a while. And we made a very good decision, I believe, around 2014, to turn the reins over to City Center Waco when they were first kind of getting up and running with the Main Street program and give them an ability to go out and promote this program more. It's TIF funds, but it's really just meant to address smaller projects that are facade focused, or that may be doing some other improvements. But to get sort of a one-to-one grant in most cases, dollar for dollar on the facade itself. So really just curb appeal and helping people, you know, do small projects that don't need maybe the full-blown TIF grant situation because they don't have sidewalks or anything else. So since 2015, the program use has increased. We have folks out there promoting it and, and working on getting it in the hands of people who, who can take advantage of it and want to do some improvements to their building. And some of them want to do them piece by piece, which is fantastic. They can have a small project or a fairly large one. So you see here that the awards have ranged from 1,800 to 45,000, which that is the upper limit. So that facade grants and dollars have increased over the years. So that's what this chart shows you, is just simply dollars awarded. But they still vary because it depends on the projects that are coming forward and what has, what, what the size of the projects. But just so you're aware, there's been previous allocations out of the TIF fund into this program. The original was just 75,000. We were testing the waters, then a couple of $100,000 allocations, and then a 150. This request for you today is for 200,000 because they are really at almost zero dollars. They have allocated everything, and a lot of projects are in the works. They have about $900 left. And so they need an infusion of cash to be able to carry this program forward and do some more grants. So we are recommending to you the 200,000 to replace that. And at the rate they're going, we may come back sooner than a year from now to ask for some additional funding. But this is all that's been requested right now. So we will, we will watch how this goes.
Mellett, I know the awards assigned from this grant range from 1,800 to 45,000. With this 200,000 grant, do you have an idea or even a, an estimate of how many grants can be given out based on some needs that are already coming through or asks that are coming through already?
You know, it could just be a few large grants of 45 each, or it could be some of those and a lot of little bitty grants. We really just rely on City Center Waco to administer the program. So they go out there talking to the folks who are interested in using the program and just trying to tailor it to make sure we're making a difference for all different levels of investment and need and ability to, to do improvements on their projects.
One of the good things that happened, I guess, 2015, was the change of scope for the facade improvement grant that lowered the threshold. So as opposed to it being, what, I think it was?
It was 10,000 minimum.
10 was the base.
10,000, and it, it went down considerably. So my smaller projects, you know, I still have the opportunity to apply for those. And, and I think that's what really catapulted the, the, the usage of the program. So it's no real way to tell because if it's a bunch of small projects, and that's one, if it's four or five big ones, you know, so it's, it's kind of an unknown.
And I guess I was asking that because I was, I guess, the, the second part of my question is, 200,000 enough to get them through the next year or next two years? And so that's where the question was coming, is the 200,000 enough?
I believe it is for now. And we will see as it goes along. This is a fairly easy process, usually for us to come back to you and just ask for additional.
Okay.
And to not have too much money allocated at any one time and make sure we're using all the options in all the places. So.
Thank you.
Now, I want to pick out a part of what Hector's saying too. Do we know what the pipeline is right now? We're just, what requests are? We just don't?
There are five right now that are in process and have not been completed. There, that's, would take you to a total of 18 total facade grants that have been done since the program. So, and you'll see on there, there are several that are in the 30,000 to 40,000 range, and there are some in there that are 5,000, 1,000, three, three or 4,000. So it really does vary. It really provides a kind of a broad opportunity for assistance.
Thank you, Mellett.
Thank you.
Presentation, Mellett.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mellett. Council members, considering the time, I think we are, postpone our other presentation and move in.
Move into executive session. Okay. Are there any requests for future agenda items? Before we go into executive session, I want to remind everybody that's watching right now that today is Election Day, and the polls close at 7:00. So you've still got time to vote if you haven't voted. We will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 4:39 PM.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, attorney briefing Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, William Cody Miles and Gina Miles versus City of Waco, by and through City Secretary Esmeralda Hudson, Foster CM Group Incorporated, Kodiak Trenching and Boring LLC, cause number 2018-2498-4, pending in the 170th Judicial District Court. Two, real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. Three, economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. And four, personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074. A, City Secretary Esmeralda Hudson. And B, nomination and appointment of individuals to McLennan County Appraisal District Board of Directors. We are now in executive session at 4:40 PM.